This is the regular meeting of the Oregon City Commission. Today is November 3rd. Good evening, I'm Alice Norris, the mayor.
James Nocita, Commissioner.
Commissioner Neely, Commissioner present.
Now, wait a minute, I believe you have a new title. You've now, now, Mayor-elect Neely. Congratulations on your election this evening.
Thank you.
They're clapping for me? Rocky Smith, City Commissioner.
And Daphne West, City Commissioner.
Please stand and join me in this flight loop.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we go into citizen comment this evening, as mayor, I receive, we all receive letters from people, and I probably receive more than most, and I share some of them. This one I wanted to share with the public. It's kind of an atypical letter. When we closed the interpretive, when the interpretive center closed, we didn't close it, interpreter center closed, we got stacks of mail. I think I had two stacks about two inches thick, mostly from school kids, but from people all over that lamented the closing of it. Just got this one this week. "Hello, my name is Jordan Kelp. I am 11 years old and I live in Oregon City. I want to tell you I visited the Oregon City Interpretive Center and I'm disappointed that they lost their fundings to keep it running. It makes me mad to think that many kids are losing the great learning opportunity about the pioneers and first settlers in Oregon. I think you should visit the little building that remains and still holds the beautiful, historic things that had to be shut down. These people are great people who love history. Every day, people from many different states come in and ask for the center. Well, they had lost their fundings. Instead of learning, they walk out the door with sad looks on their faces. Please help them. I love that place so much and I've been doing my best to help. We need your help for new people to learn what happened in Oregon City. Please listen to me. I would someday love to see the place up and running." There was a happy face on that. "Everybody says my hopes are too high, but I know that if you listen to me, you might be able to help. Sincerely, Jordan Kelp." Wanted to share that with you. I thought that, I'm sure she reflects the feelings of many people and visitors in the community. So, let's move into citizen comments. I see that we have two people scheduled to speak. First, William Becker. And when you come to the microphone, just a reminder, please identify yourself by name and city in which you reside. And then you may speak to us for up to three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm William Becker. I live in Portland, and I am here actually with my McLaughlin Memorial Association trustee hat on. I was going to do period dress even, but I just, too much work. I want to remind everybody that we have our big soiree Friday night at 7:30. It's $25 and includes an engraved or etched wine tasting glass and a raffle ticket for an incredible tribute blanket, and all kinds of things. 19th century music, entertainment, Dr. John McLaughlin. I know some of you up there have already purchased your ticket. I'm looking at three of you anyway that are pumped together. And I know a couple of you have also donated. And encourage the rest of the staff and the commission and people listening to do the same. You can get tickets at the Barclay House. I've got some here. I know Commissioner Neely also sells them. Lola Harding sells them, so a lot of people around with them. I'll leave these here if anybody wants to pass them.
Ainsworth House, 7:30 benefiting McLaughlin House.
Thank you.
And I was told that I had the winning ticket for the blanket. Is that not true?
That's not true.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, David and Marsha Skinner. Come up together.
David Skinner, Oregon City. I was here at the last city commission meeting talking about the vehicle running into the wall, and I expressed my concerns that I felt like, you know, it's not a question of if, but when. I didn't have much long to wait. Four days later, Sunday.
Another one?
Yes. At 9:15. Another drunk driver, it was raining like cats and dogs, people can remember, smashed into the rest of my wall.
This is your third one?
Third one in 13 months. The last two were from Sunday to Sunday. October the 17th to October the 24th. And I've talked to the city and to the police department, and I'm still at my wit's end. We feel that a barrier needs to be placed in that area, because now I just know it's going to happen again.
Yeah.
I guess it'd be concerned about the form of barrier.
Yeah, that's, I'm not sure what to do with this one. This is, that's a really, you want to speak too?
We had some Public Works men were out today and they were talking about placing some reflective arrows or something that was going to show, you know, more clearly for traffic, that the road went that way, which, you know, all those things are good. They put placement things in the road and repainted lines and stuff, and all those things help, but this last driver, what was his blood alcohol?
1.9.
I don't think that's going to, you know, I mean, we want concrete barriers, and I don't get the feeling that that's a possibility, and I really want to know why, why we can't have that, something like that.
Thank you again. We asked staff to work with you. Do you have a report on that?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
We have been looking into it, and as you know, I empathize with you folks a great deal, because I think the chances of that happening, I don't know what the chances are, but it's just a terrible thing. When it comes to engineered solutions for traffic safety, I think it's very important that we rely on the engineered solution, not the emotional solution. And sometimes they're the same. But I do know that Public Works has been out to the side a couple of different times. Police have looked at their call logs, and it does look like it's alcohol-related almost every time, rather than speed-related. Public Works is prepared to give you a more detailed report during the reports, and that's kind of what we're planning to do. I think there are some other mitigating things we can do, other than reflective striping, and I know they're looking at some of that.
You said, did you mean a report later tonight?
Yes.
Could you, would you mind being able to move that up, since we have an interested couple here, and we're interested as well?
Absolutely, because David Skinner and I had a chance to have a pretty long conversation shortly after last meeting, and it is, it is. It's on, it's on. Really? It is a great concern to us as well, and we have been working with Lieutenant Band and Chief Conrad with our street division. We've also, we've decided we're going to bring in a person that specializes in traffic engineering safety. They're called PTOEs, I can't remember what, it's a particular engineering license, because when you do start putting obstacles in the right of way, there are multiple, there can be multiple outcomes, one of which it can actually cause more problems if people hit it. So, as much as I very much sympathize, I mean, we want to approach this in a safe way, in a careful way, so that the city's assured that we're doing the right thing at this location. And in the meantime, we've installed things that we do feel like will help provide better visibility at this curve. We've installed reflective, reflective bumps, and, that's not the right terminology, but, and then we've also added some additional reflective striping at the, at the curve. And we put on some reflectors on the advisory speed limit of 25 miles an hour. And as Ms. Skinner noted, we're also going to be posting some curve signage, which is, it breaks away if a driver hits it. So, there's, there, it is a problem that I think we shouldn't just start putting stuff in the right of way. I think we can do what we're doing immediately, and that should help visibility. We can't, it's difficult for us to design for impaired drivers, but I don't know, Chief Conrad, if you have anything to add, but, and we do have, we've contacted Kittleson Engineering to provide, Traffic Safety Engineer to come out and meet with the police department, Public Works, and we're hoping whether the Skinners could meet with us at that time too. So, and I believe that John Lewis sent you an email kind of summarizing all of this. I'm not sure if you got it or not, but.
I appreciate his phone call the day after the third accident, but currently, out of the 80 feet of the wall, cinder block wall that we installed at our own expense, because it was damaged so much, our contractor has all but 10 feet of that wall down. So, we are currently exposed, much the same way we were on September the 19th. And both these two cars that smashed into our wall would have hit our house, both times.
Now, there's nothing there to protect us, except we've got vehicles parked there and a trailer.
As a barrier.
Yeah. And, and, you know, the concern is that things shouldn't be parked there, because that's a danger to a motorist if they drive into it. Well, I'm, my, my emotions right now are not with motorists who are crossing a line of traffic that they're not even supposed to be in and crashing into something that's parked in the public right of way. I care about me living in the house.
Yes. Let's ask Chief if you have any other information.
It has been a concerted effort between the police department and Public Works, and trying to work with the Skinners, and I too do empathize with what you folks are going through. I can't imagine what it would be like. The issue has been, is not a speed-related issue with the three traffic accidents. We've done traffic surveys out there, some Public Works both have, and it's really not a speed issue. It is an impaired driver issue. And to that end, we've been using some of our extra patrol on the weekends to try to dedicate towards that area. Obviously, we can't have somebody sitting up there all the time waiting for an impaired driver, because quite honestly, the way you catch impaired drivers is to catch them driving, not after they crash. We want to do that beforehand, so. But on the weekends, we have DUII grant funds that guys come out and work overtime on. And when those guys come out and work overtime, we've been trying to concentrate on that area. It is an imperfect science. We can't guarantee we're going to catch every drunk driver, but typically on a weekend, we catch four to five drunk drivers. And that is definitely an area we stepped up our patrol in. One of the issues we have is a lot of times, people are coming from the downtown area off 99. Quite honestly, at least two of the, of the drivers who were impaired are our neighbors. I live in that neighborhood too, as I think you folks are aware of, and they're our neighbors. They live up in that, in that same area too. So, they're coming home from the bars, whether it's in town or out of town. And, you know, it's incumbent upon us as a police department to step that up. But I have to be also honest, we're not going to catch every drunk driver that gets out of the bars, gets in their cars and drives home. So, hopefully between us and stepped up enforcement and some engineering consulting and recommendations from Public Works, hopefully we can help you folks out.
Thank you for bringing that to us again.
Thank you.
Hopefully this will help. Commissioner Nocita.
Commissioner Neely was.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Commissioner Neely first.
It does, you know, it does, it does sound like most of the things you were talking about are trying to get people's attention that are driving, and that's not what you have here. I mean, there are people that are not going to be able, even if they see it, they're probably not going to respond in time to deal with it. And I'm concerned about putting a barrier there that's going to, that's actually going to damage the vehicle or the person that's driving, but that's what you've got anyway. You've got a barrier there that damages the vehicle or a person that's driving. So, I mean, and it's a case of them being on their property versus being someplace else. And to protect their safety and their housing. So, I don't, when you're talking about the engineering solution, all I'm saying is, you've got to talk more about reflective stuff and so forth, if in fact the problem is drunk drivers.
And I might add that there's certain factors you look at when you're looking at any kind of a barricade or a barrier, and that is, is the vehicle going to crash off of it, wreck, crash off of it into oncoming traffic?
Yep.
Is it going to, can it deflect enough to slow, stop the vehicle and not damage the person that hits it? And, or is it a breakaway?
Yep.
So, those are the kinds of things we want to make sure we're selecting the appropriate kinds of safety measures.
Commissioner Nocita.
I think I'm a little more sympathetic to the Skinner's position here. Putting the barrier in the right of way, I mean, obviously is a problem if it's permanent, but I'm wondering if something can be done where a barrier is installed temporarily while a final solution is decided upon and implemented.
I think that's a fair point. But the thing we're going to do is, we're considering this pretty urgent now. I'm not saying it would be urgent enough if I were living there and I had three eighties in a row in a short period. So, there's no urgency unless it's right now or yesterday that would be timely enough in that situation. But we have Kittleson coming out next week, I believe, so I'm considering this a high priority for our Public Works Department. And I want the solution, even if it's temporary, to make sure it doesn't create a bigger hazard or a different hazard that's maybe just as bad. And so, I think we're on this and we're considering it a high priority, and I expect we'll have some answers fairly quickly after Kittleson comes out. So, if you could bear with us a few more, a few more days, we're considering this a high priority, and I know our staff does too.
And I really appreciate the interdepartmental cooperation toward helping solve this problem. It's definitely genuine and real. So, we'll keep on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one other thing.
Commissioner Neely.
Is that schedule fixed at this point? Because if you can accommodate them to be in those meetings, I think it's critical.
Still setting up the meeting.
Yeah, so if you could talk to them and see if it works. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And that's the last of the citizen comments that I have. All right, then looking at the agenda tonight, is there any commissioner that would ask for anything to be reordered or pulled off the consent agenda for separate consideration? Seeing done, we will take the agenda in the order in which it appears. So, we'll begin with our general business. It may be the final reading for an ordinance.
No, don't jinx it.
I'm going to not say that. We have considered this plan amendment and future, and zone change. Has it been six weeks, six times? It's been a while, but tonight we have it for introduction of the ordinance, because it was intended that the language that we looked at last time, that described the concept plan more fully, was added into the resolution, into the ordinance. So, with that, is there any final word from staff before we?
I think you summarized it, summarized it well. If you'd like, I can walk through what those changes were to condition number six. You would?
Does anyone need, does anyone need to have that?
I don't.
Okay. Let's continue then. And then the other thing for my fellow commissioners is that we can adopt the first and second reading this evening if the vote on the, on the first reading is unanimous.
That's correct, and abstentions don't count. It has to be unanimous on first reading.
Okay. So, may I have a motion on this ordinance, which is ordinance 10, it's hiding, so I can't see what it is.
10-10.
Is it 10-10?
10-12.
10-12, okay. Commissioner West.
I would move for approval for first and second reading for ordinance for introduction number 10.
Just first.
Just first reading.
Not first, okay.
Yeah.
10-10-12, comprehensive plan amendment for, from future urban designation to MUC designation and the zone change from county.
May I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Smith. Is there discussion on this motion? For first reading, Mr. Sullivan.
This is ordinance number 10-10-12, an ordinance amending a portion of the city's comprehensive plan map from county FU, future urban, to MUC, mixed-use corridor, and Title 17, zoning Chapter 17.06.030, a portion of the official zoning map of the Oregon City Municipal Code from County FU 10 to MUC-1, mixed-use corridor district, for the property identified as Clackamas County Map 3-2E-10C, tax lot 800.
Thank you. Nancy, the vote please.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Ayes.
Commissioner Nocita.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. So, if it's your desire, we can pass the second.
I'll move for second reading and final adoption of ordinance number 10-10-12.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, second by Commissioner Smith. For the second reading, Mr. Sullivan.
This is ordinance number 10-10-12, an ordinance amending a portion of the city's comprehensive plan map from County FU, future urban, to MUC, mixed-use corridor, and Title 17, zoning Chapter 17.06.030, a portion of the official zoning map of the Oregon City Municipal Code from County FU 10 to MUC 1, mixed-use corridor district, for the property identified as Clackamas County Map 3-2E-10C, tax lot 800.
Thank you. I guess just for the public, we have had extensive discussions on this. We've had extensive, we've had many changes to the ordinance, and so the reason for the first and second reading this evening, not because it's an emergency, but because consideration for the patience of the property owners who sat through these and have been for multiple meetings, that this is appropriate. Nancy, the vote please.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. White ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you again for your patience.
Thanks to the staff. Be very cool.
Yes, everybody did. Appreciate all who put time in, into this. Hopefully, it's better because of the time we put in. Thank you. Okay, next we have the second reading of ordinance 10-10, which is adoption of the solar installation code. The second reading, is there a motion?
Move to approve ordinance number 10-10-10 and adopt the solar installation code.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Nocita.
That's the first reading, I take it.
No, it's the second.
Second.
This is ordinance number 10-10-10, an ordinance amending Title 15, Buildings and Construction, Chapter 15.04 Building Code, Section 15.04.010 of the Oregon City Municipal Code of 1991, and enacting a new Title 15, Building and Construction, Chapter 15.04 Building Code, Section 15.04.010.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or comments? Seeing done, Nancy.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Now, a resolution that accompanies that, which we haven't yet seen, and that this is a resolution adopting the fees that apply to the solar installation specialty code. So, Mr. Cockle, Tony.
I'll have Mr. Hosey, our building official, come up to give the presentation.
This would really be your first official time at the dais, wouldn't it?
With this city, yes. Absolutely.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Tom Hosey, our chief building official. Before you have Resolution 10-25, which establishes a flat fee for the installation of solar photovoltaic systems, PV systems. The purpose of the state mandated fee is to encourage the use of PV systems in conforming construction, primarily residential. It's all part of the green movement, which is a good thing. Staff recommends the adoption, and if you have any questions, if there are any, I'd be happy to try to address them.
Okay. The schedule of fees is outlined here. Does anyone have any questions about that, or the code?
I would just, if I might.
Commissioner Neely.
I would just ask, are these fees consistent with other municipalities' adoption?
They are, they are, they are consistent, yes.
Then may I have a motion, please?
I move for approval, the Resolution Number 10-28, adopting the fees for solar installation specialty code.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Smith. Is there comment or discussion? Seeing Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution that's tied to our Main Street pedestrian bicycle improvements, Phase 1 and 2, and this is necessary to give political support. We have to adopt it, and then to approve a local financial match for the project. So, to give us a detail, Nancy Frechler, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Put while the, actually, this is, I don't remember this kind of a funding source being proposed by ODOT in the past. The Oregon Department of Transportation has been directed through the Oregon Transportation Commission to set up this grant program. I think it's about $21 million for local agencies, ODOT, whomever, to apply for funding, maximum $2.1 million per application, that is really geared towards transit, bicycle and pedestrian transportation. What they're trying to look, really focuses on, non-highway transportation improvements that will help reduce the demand on the highway system. And they're particularly looking for interconnected, multifaceted projects, environmentally sensitive projects, sustainable projects, and those that foster livability and provide better access and more transportation options to Oregonians. And I think that the Main Street sidewalk project is exemplary of these, in looking at the application and the kinds of responses we need to provide there. We will compete well, I hope. I'm sure there'll be lots of competition too. But what we're planning to do in this, as you know, we've applied for a grant through the Transportation Enhancement Funds through the state for part of the project. That maximum grant award was 1.5 million, and we believe we could do about five blocks with that, and that leaves the other five. So, we really do need to phase this, which it would have been nice to do it all at once, but really, when you look at the size of grants available, we, a phasing approach is good. And a phasing approach might be best anyway. It's hard to say. So, this one, we're wording it, we're not saying 10th to 15th or 1/5th to 10th, we're wording it as five blocks. And that way, we're hoping there's some flexibility, depending on the availability of any other funding we could, may be selected for. And with that, there's a minimum 10.27 percent local match, and I wanted you to be aware of that.
So, that means that the maximum local match would be $215,670?
Yes. We haven't done all the math yet, but it could be that there, there could be favorable if we could find sources, like for example, if we could show paying for part of the parking meters with local match, could give us a higher local match. And so, I wanted to just mention that tonight, if we can, you know, if we can find a, something that's favorable to the application, we might do that. But it would be something that we have, there's, we have a secure funding source for. And I'd come back to you and let you know that, if we wanted to do that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Neely.
You say a phasing approach might even be better. I guess, when I think of phasing in, if you haven't accommodated already in your planning what was going on, are you going to have to undo something in terms of what you've already done in order to accommodate something like this?
No, we're doing everything in a way that it can build upon whatever's been done previously.
Okay.
In fact, we're trying to get some of this utility work done, so. It's hard getting work done downtown, let me tell you.
A lot going on down there. May I have a motion for adoption, please?
Some of.
In a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nocita, second by Commissioner Smith. Further comment or discussion? Seeing done, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Next, the consent agenda, may I have a motion for adoption?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Smith. On the consent agenda, let's have the vote.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. And that concludes our business agenda. Moving on to communications, we'll begin with our city manager, Mr. Fraser.
Thank you, Your Honor. Have several things tonight, but I'll try to get through it quickly. The city has adopted an internal policy on social media tools, Twitter and Facebook. It's a limited presence.[1698.33] It's a limited presence. It's not the same kind of activated site that you would experience maybe at a, with my niece and nephew, for example, or anybody in that generation. But it is a limited presence, and we're going to be making kind of continuous improvements to it along the way. But I emailed you folks earlier this week to notify you of the launch, and so if you get, if you have suggestions, comments, or questions about it, please let us know. Also, we have a number of openings on city boards and commissions, and we have a deadline, I believe, of Friday, November fifth, for some of those. And I think you're all aware what those are. They're available also on our website for anybody that's interested. We're still taking those applications. Also, we had the fence repaired on Laurel Lane, but we are going to be scheduling, I've asked the chief to participate in some neighborhood meetings in that area. I know they've had a number of those meetings over the years. I think, it might have been as recently as three years ago, when the meeting's kind of tapered off. But before that, when some of you, I think, were on the commission, they had a number of meetings then and came up with this idea of the fence. I think it was a laudable effort, but the fence and the lack of a reasonable way for people to egress through that area is as much of a problem as the fence itself. So, it's one, almost one of those, although much less severe case, that we were talking about with the guardrail. We've engineered, we came up with a solution, but we really didn't think it all the way through, and now we have to go back to the drawing board and look at a solution that will allow, I think, some sort of pedestrian traffic through that area.
And that problem was going on before my term as well, so it's really been a long, long history.
Yeah. We probably, I'm pretty sure, I'm almost a hundred percent confident that we won't please everybody, but I do think we're going to get eighty, twenty out of it before we're done. That's our goal, anyway. So, they, I think the chief is also going to present an update to you on December seventh at the work session about what we've done there. Also, this week, and I want to thank Mayor Norris for encouraging this, and to the extent that you did, I have, we had our first city-county interface meeting this week, right here in this room, yesterday. And about seven months ago, when I first started working with the commission, there were a number of city-county issues, and I really think because, you know, there were sixteen or seventeen cities in the county, and so they have, in Mr. Wheeler's words, many masters that they serve, as do we. Only ours are smaller groups like neighborhood associations. They have groups like cities. But they only have one host city, and they only have one county seat. And because of that, that unique interface that we have geographically, politically, operationally, is unlike the relationship that the county has with any other city. And I think that they are recognizing that, and some of these issues that have been building up have been brought to their attention several months ago. They have issues, too, that come up with us, and sometimes they may feel those are unresolved. So, I'm determined to continue to have these face-to-face meetings with them. I think what we're going to do is commit to a standing meeting time once a month until we get some of the list. We have about, I think the city has about six or eight issues on that list, and the county has about three or four. So, until we get that list down to a more manageable size, so it doesn't seem like the issues are going unresolved, at that point, we may go down to quarterly or every other meeting, every other month meetings. But Mr. Wheeler came, brought both his deputy administrators, I was here, along with several of our department heads, and we got a lot done. The great thing about having that follow-up meeting is that we will be holding each other accountable for the results that we promised. And we actually doled out some work assignments in the meeting, so we have to do our part, and I'm looking forward to the county doing theirs. One of the things we talked about in that meeting was the fact that the Clackamas Heights redevelopment area, and I, are all of you familiar with that project?
The whole project, yeah.
Chief Conrad has raised a concern with me, and this concern is really about the service load that that would put on the police department. And I asked him to do some research, and what we found, essentially, we're looking at additional two hundred housing, low-income housing units in that area, over and above what's there now. And it's interesting to note that in two thousand nine, there were four hundred and thirty-eight calls for police service in that, in that area, in, within that dwelling, within that development area, at current levels, with another five hundred and sixty-nine calls for service generated in the surrounding area. The average hourly cost of a police officer in Oregon City is fifty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents, and so if each of those required an estimated one hour to handle, that would have cost the police department fifty-three thousand dollars to respond to calls as a result of that development. So, if you double or triple the size of that impact, and I do think they're going to do some things with design and security to mitigate, so I do think they're aware of that. But if you, if you, even if you do mitigate, you're going to have a significant impact, and they're having a significant impact right now on that apartment. That doesn't include the impacts that they have on parks, and roads, and streets, sewers, sidewalks, all of it. And so, my concern is simply, not that we don't want them, I think we do, but I think we, it doesn't hurt for us to recognize that that impact should be offset with a payment in lieu of taxes to the city to mitigate the cost of those services. And that's one of the things that I was talking to them about. The Housing Authority currently does make a payment in lieu of taxes, but they make it to the county. And the sheriff isn't answering those calls for service. Our folks are. So, that is just an example of one of the things we're talking to them about. It's more of a matter of fairness, I think. And the other thing we talked about were, just to give you some examples, I don't want to rehearse the whole meeting here, but to give you another example is the installation of sewer pipes in the city. We have this John Storm Park, which is a beautiful waterfront park that this community built, and along it, I noticed this long tethering giant main there that's almost rusted into camouflage, so that's, maybe that's a good thing, but it's very noticeable from the water. And I guess, when I hear the communities, I hear folks in the community, people that are community leaders, expressing some discontent about the fact that Oregon City sometimes feels like it's sort of a dumping ground for other folks' problems.
It has been.
And when I, when I think about that, I try to relay that to the county, because I want them to recognize if we want to change the way people feel here about that, and reverse some of that resentment, we need to, we need to think about what we're doing when we put pipes in the ground or on top of pedestrian bridges, which is one of the things they're thinking of doing, is putting thirty, twenty and thirty-inch force main sewer pipes on top of the pedestrian bridge between Oregon City and Gladstone. And I almost can predict some of the business owners in the downtown that would say to me, and I'll just kind of pantomime this a little bit, would they do this and let us we go, would be sort of the reaction.
Let me guess who said that.
And I appreciate the pride that these folks have in their community, and so I'm an advocate for them, and I want, and I know that each of you are. So, I'm determined to at least present the other side of the coin and say, if we want to change our image for being a dumping ground, the last thing we want to do is put sewer pipes on top of a bridge to display to the world that we have not changed, that we're not going to change that impression. So, I do think the solution for that bridge is probably going to be more expensive than just laying a pipe on the, on the top. But then, you could say that for laying a pipe on top of the ground anywhere in Oregon City. It always costs more to bury one than it does to leave it on top of the ground. It costs more to engineer brackets to hang under a bridge than on top. I'm not an engineer, but we have some that work for us that are going to be trying to help the county find solutions. But those are just some, these aren't easy solutions that we're being approached with, and they're not easy problems to solve, but we're doing our best. And I think if we continue these meetings, that we're going to have better, more respectful, mutual collaboration with our county neighbors than we've had in the past. So, I'm going to continue that effort.
I think you have a question. Commissioner Neely?
Yeah.
Yeah, one's more of a general one. I would like to perhaps devote a study session to the six or seven issues that Oregon City is presenting. I'm sure you've had input from individual commissioners about issues and so forth, but if we could hear what you're putting forward, and I don't want to hear it now.
Yeah. I can assure you, these are all things within your work plan and your adopted goals.
Oh, I understand. I'd like to come to that sewer system that's going along the Willamette River there, which is the one I'm sure you're referring to. The, a previous engineer that no longer works for the county, that worked with us very closely, we were talking about having a walkway over it, and he said, that's a great idea, because they, it would result in a benefit to them, because it would give them better access for actually maintaining a sewer line, whether it's this one or whether it's one that they replaced. So, it's one of these synergistic relations we could go into, which would make it even better.
Could I ask you a historic question? I understand that there was some sort of a perception, at least, of a commitment that some pedestrian facility would be installed on some of these larger pipes, but that never actually came to be.
To my knowledge, I don't think so. At that, I mean, at that point, the staff were interested, but you've had changes. And so, I get, but the point is, we've had those discussions before. Ms. Crushour is familiar with some of that, and so that came from citizen-driven comments when we had a citizen group working with the Tri-C.
And this, to me, this just highlights the reason why, number one, we should initiate these interface meetings. Number two, we should keep doing them periodically, whether we, even when we have very little to talk about, because it facilitates this communication that we're seeing. If I tend to hit snags at some of these meetings, you don't be surprised from time to time if I invite elected officials from both, from our organization, but I only want to do that if the county is going to reciprocate, of course. And I think their preference, and mine, too, for that matter, is for staff to try to work out as many of these problems as we can, so that they don't emanate up and take up the time of our elected folks. These are problems that are mostly technical in nature, and they should be and are within the capacity of the staffs in both organizations to solve.
Yeah. But some of them are driven by, by interest in terms of the improving the waterfront of the wind case and so forth. And so, I think it would be a benefit to find out what it is that you're discussing, and you may get some historic perspective.
I'll give you two examples, but I can report back on the results. I don't have a lot of positive results to report back, because most of these require everybody to go back to the drawing board and get more information. But I hope to have results of actual things that are going to be getting done from these meetings that I can share with you. Also, we have a new library behavior policy that we enacted. The library did not have a policy in the past, and, you know, just like these are, you can't run at the swimming pool full speed, you know, with slippery feet. Well, we have.
There's always at the library.
We didn't have rules at the library, but we do have now, and I wanted the commission to be aware that we have those. Maureen, do you need to say anything about?
Yeah, I'll probably.
Okay, go for it.
We did have.
It's always been shh, hasn't it?
We did have behavior policy before, but that were adopted in nineteen ninety-eight, so they had not been reviewed for several years. And they were pretty informal, and I hate to bring my Eugene bias with me, but I did come from a larger community that, where we really did have a lot of severe problems. But what I learned from that is that it's better to get things in place before there are problems, and especially even just from a point of view from training staff and stuff, and just talking about how you even approach problems, you know, so that there's an awareness. Because just because we are Oregon City does not mean things, that things don't happen. So, we really need to be prepared. So, that's one reason I wanted to review the behavior policy. It's really important to provide a safe and comfortable place for everybody, so we need to be alert to a lot of things. When I did this, I looked at models of behavior policies for other libraries, and Aloma County is kind of like the model for the entire state. And like I said, some of those situations are more extreme than we might see here, but it's better to be prepared then, sorry. So, I got staff in for it, and then went through a process of vetting through the attorneys to make sure we had everything in order. Then this went, this did go in front of the library board for review and approval, just so you know. And what you see in front of you is a couple of different documents that we would use. It's the behavior policy itself. It's children in the library policy, so that we can try to keep children with their caregivers, especially under a certain age. And then we have an incident report form that we would use to describe certain things as they happen in the library, so that we can document. And then, the very last thing is an exclusion form, so that if there is ever a situation where we have to exclude somebody from the library, we have a process to go through. And so, that's what you have in front of you. And do you have any questions?
I have a problem with a couple of them. First of all, number fourteen, it says, these things are prohibited, bringing in and consuming food or drink except non-alcohol. Oh, I bet it is alcohol. No, and then, and then, number seventeen is, it's really difficult. I never would have gotten through college if I hadn't been able to sleep in the library.
Mayor, I already mentioned that to her.
Yeah, David already mentioned it, and I just want to say that, you know, in an academic library where you're studying for hours and hours, it's a little bit different.
Okay, okay.
But we're not a hotel, and so, just want to make that clear.
I think it's great to have these. I really appreciate you updating them.
Thank you, Maureen. And then we have an update from Nancy Crushour about some transportation projects, school zones, and so on. She's going to give you a brief update on some of those, and then that will be followed up by Dan Drinlaw, talking to you just a little bit about the Oregon City Shopping Center.
Three, three updates. The Leland Road project, we have run into a delay, but there was a Quest Underground duct bank that was located where we were going to put a stormpipe, and so that's caused about a four, at least a four-week delay on that project, and I want you to be aware of that. The worst outcome in terms of product would be, we wouldn't get the top lift on this fall, and that would have to wait till next spring. And then, the other thing I wanted to let you know about is, we've been looking at, now that we have jurisdiction over Holcomb Boulevard, we're looking at putting in a school zone at Holcomb Elementary School. And John Lewis has talked to the principal, and we've also received communication from various people in the Park Place neighborhood that support this. So, we're, that will be going in, and again, there'll be some people that love it and some people that do not like it, just so you're aware of that. And then, it will be when children present, so it won't be the seven to five, which may be a little more, not quite as unliked. And then, the other thing I wanted to start preparing you for is, for the jug handle project, all of the tree cutting that needs to happen for that project needs to begin in January because of the migratory bird regulations. And the, the tree cutting, the mitigation, has gone through land use permits. It's also meeting all the federal regulations for, that are associated with the project, because we do have some federal funding. And then, there's just regulations, anyway. So, I just wanted to start preparing, that will be beginning as early as January.
Okay, thank you.
I got it.
Commissioner Neely?
I know I spoke to you this before, and it was kind of interesting, talking to people that were opposed to the street maintenance fee that lived near Leland Road, and they've changed their minds since they've seen Leland and Myers being serviced and so forth. But when I talk to people that were on Leland Road, and that area of Myers, is that we've got segments there where there are no sidewalks, and not only are there no sidewalks, there's basically a drop-off there where the stormwater comes in, too, and there's, there's almost no safe place for people to walk. Now, some of those areas have been, I don't know how they've done it, they probably have some kind of piping under there and have gravelled over that, so there's an area where children can walk and be off the road. Are you looking at that kind of thing being done over the whole segment? You mentioned putting a stormwater by, so that's why I'm asking.
Right. Well, there's also some crossings we're doing, but what we've tried to do on Leland Road, since what we would really have liked to have done on Leland Road is build sidewalks, but we don't have the right-of-way out there. And not only that, but there are homes that have their front doors. If we widened and put in sidewalks and bike lanes, I mean, literally, we would be in their front yards. And that, that kind of a project, while I would, it would still be nice to have that kind of a road there, it's hard, it's not, it's difficult with the way the homes are laid out. And also, that kind of a project is multimillion-dollar, which we don't have the funding for. But so, what we're trying to do on Leland Road with the paving that we're doing is provide as much of a bike slash shoulder, we're calling it a shoulder, and that will be the place where, once all the striping is done, we're trying to provide at least a four-foot shoulder on both sides, and some places a little wider than that. So, it'll be, like before, there was probably six inches or less in some places, so we're trying to do that, but you won't see that until the striping is completed.
Well, now, I'll come back to issues that have been, historical issues that various of us have brought up. We, we really had, even though it's a bit frustrating, we had speed limits that reflected those particular areas. Some segments of Myers, for example, were at thirty-five where the sidewalks were. Some of them we brought down to twenty-five where there weren't sidewalks and so forth. And I really think you need to make consideration for that. In fact, some of the people on Leland Road are making that very suggestion. If you can't provide the sidewalks, bring down the speed limit in those segments where we don't have the sidewalks to a safe speed. Now, we talked about this before, all the way down to Lynn, all the way down to Seventh Street, but, not Seventh Street, excuse me, Fifth. And, I mean, it's, I think it's a safety issue, and drivers don't like to make these speed limit changes. They think they're speed traffics, but in fact, they're done for the purpose of safety. And I really think you have to have the TAC look at that very seriously. And I think one way you have to have the TAC look at it seriously is have them walk it. And not, not look at the street design and everything, actually have them walk it and see certain segments, and there is no safe place, and I don't think your narrow striping with children and so forth are really going to address the problem.
Well, you sound like you're running for mayor or something.
Well, no, but this, this issue, this issue, this issue has come up several times before. This is not new. The previous commissions have brought up this specific area.
Like I said, I would have liked to have had sidewalks, and then, I, just a little reminder, is the state establishes the speed limits along there, and they did a very, very elaborate speed study. speed study. We're still continuing to monitor it, and I hear what you're saying, but I'm not sure what.
I'm sure, I'm sure you heard it.
I can't change the speed on it, because you told me to.
Okay, thank you for that report.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Just a couple more things, a couple more things, and we're going to finish up here. Tony Conkle wants to update you on the biomass energy plant that I believe Commissioner Neely asked about at the last meeting. Tony actually attended the hearing, and he has a short report to make to you on that.
So you did, did request that we look into what was going on out there. So we contacted the county, and they have a composting biomass energy facility proposal. That's before their planning commission currently. I did attend the October 25 hearing and provided testimony concerning some water quality issues potentially for Evernethie Creek, as well as their transportation study did not look at any of the trips that would continue north on Redland to the 213 Redland intersection. So those comments are in the record under oral testimony. Right now, they are requesting a zone change for about two and a quarter acres from exclusive farm use to timber, and then associated with that is a conditional use permit for the facility itself. It would be a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week operation that they're proposing out on that site. It's about, it's about eight and a half, nine miles outside Oregon City along Redland Road. So right now, they've had, they've had two.
Two public hearings?
Yeah. Two public hearings. They've left the record open for written comments until tomorrow, and then they are meeting on the 15th of November for the planning commission is going to take 30 minutes of testimony, rebuttal testimony from the applicant, and then make a recommendation that night, and then that'll be, go forward to the Board of County Commissioners on December 1st. So at this point, if you have any other questions, that's the update that I have.
So is the planning staff still recommending nonapproval?
Correct. The planning, the county planning staff has recommended denial on both the conditional use permit and the zone change request.
It's a Mr. Hewitt. You may know him.
Yes. He served on our city commission a few years ago.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. And then Dan Drantlaw's going to give us a quick update on the Oregon City Shopping Center's redevelopment plans.
I'm passing out a site plan of the Oregon City Shopping Center. This has come up a couple of times at the Urban Renewal Commission meeting as to what Oregon City Shopping Center plans were, and if they were willing to coordinate with the Cove development. And I've had several meetings with the onsite manager, Kristen Jones, and also with a representative of the ownership group, and they are proposing some changes to the center, but they're not exactly what we were looking for. I've made the request several times to consider the ability to punch through the middle of that shopping center and provide a potential connection to the Cove. They have absolutely no interest in doing that. What they are interested in doing is, and they also submitted an application to the planning department, if you look at the first front page of that diagram, you'll see three small buildings that are outlined in blue. Those are proposed to be demoed. And what they would do, if you turn over the page, you can see that they proposed adding a building towards the front along 909E, and basically, it's, it's a, pretty much a one-for-one exchange in terms of square footage. So, and we'll also get a little bit of landscaping out of that. So it'll be a slight improvement. The downside to this is that they're investing some money in the center, which means a major redevelopment is probably even more unlikely. But at least I did discourage them. They actually did consider applying for a storefront grant. And I did discourage that.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Amendment, oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me. Chamber of Commerce met there, I believe it was last Wednesday at Good Morning, Oregon City, and talked a little bit about some of the changes that they're proposing, and certainly going to be better than it is currently, and better for the tenants, I believe, as well. And the tenants certainly expressed strong support for the changes, not having absentee manager there any longer. But, you know, when you, when we look at this, the one thing that it screams for is a little bit more landscaping. And you haven't gotten any.
Well, Tony can address this, too, but there is a limit to how much we can bring a non-conforming use into conforming. It's based on the proportion of the change, the addition.
Okay.
I'm on summer. I don't see me there, but I see me.
As a question?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Neely?
My recollection was in, in the, in the Cove development, did we not talk about the easement at the back end of the Cove development that could connect into the?
Yes.
Now, was this, was this, was this discussed with them as an option in terms of having?
With OC Shopping Center?
Yes.
Yes, but again, they had no interest in.
They didn't have interest in that either?
No.
So they didn't want to punch to the middle, but they didn't want to go to the back end either?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any way we can create a sentence? Never mind.
Okay. We're down to our last item. Chief Conrad has an announcement about yet another of our Oregon City police officers achieving some recognition that we think is really important. So, chief?
This is the second year in a row that one of our police officers has been honored by the Oregon Association of Police Officers for the lifesaving award. Sergeant Dave Canucci has, it's been announced, he's receiving the award. It won't be presented until the 19th of this month, but it is in regards to him saving the life of a suicidal subject earlier this year.
Great. Please express to him our appreciation.
I will.
Thank you. You're all finished?
Well, I mentioned to you that we're working on an employee rewards program. We're closer to that. We have a draft now that we're circulating among our staff, but we don't have the final parameters of the program yet, but we're still working on that.
A new program?
Well, it's a, it's an employee rewards program that would encourage frontline employees who have ideas about how the city can save money to submit those ideas to us. And if they're certified that they do save money.
That's great.
They actually do save money, and we actually use them. They'll be reviewed by the executive team, and then an employee can get up to $250 as an award for that contribution. They'll only be once a year, and there is some other conditions, but I just wanted you to know we're still working on that.
Nice. It's a nice incentive for employees and helpful for us. Thank you for all that, and I really appreciate your initiative and meeting with the county. I think that can bear some good partnership and collaboration with the county is really important. Okay. In my report, I have an appointment this evening to Blaine Meyer to the Transportation Advisory Committee. This is a, a vacancy occurred when, in the chamber's appointment, and so Blaine is finishing an unfinished term, and it will go from November 3rd to the end of the year in 2011. And that's it for my report. Commissioners, do you have reports this evening?
None.
Seeing none? Oh, Commissioner Smith?
I just want to thank everybody downtown. My nephews are of trick-or-treat age, and one of the highlights every year, Halloween's my favorite holiday, by the way, if you don't know that.
Is it your ghosts?
Well, a little bit of everything, but usually by the, anymore by the time I get to Halloween, I'm, I'm over it. But I love going trick-or-treat, trick-or-treating with my nephews every year, and I've made that kind of a mission as, you know, whatever I'm doing that night, I go down trick-or-treat with my nephews on Main Street, and then throughout River Crest Park as well, but.
I thought that was you behind that mask at my door.
I saw you down there with a mask on, I think.
Yep, you did. I go over here. I love it down there.
I didn't put a costume on this year, but.
You looked pretty scary, though.
It was just.
Oh, it wasn't a mask?
Ah, Alice.
I'm just hoping to watch.
But I just wanted to say, you know, unfortunately, by the time I made it down to Main Street, my nephews were at the last stop. It was so crazy. The traffic was just insane. I thought, okay, I'll park up on the hill, take the elevator, that'll be great. I'll be down there. There was a line on the elevator I've never seen as long, and so there was a mass crowd of people going down the stairs. It was crazy downtown.
It was.
And the amount of people from out of Oregon City was huge. A lot of people from outside Oregon City, including my nephews. But it was, it was just a great, great event as it always is. So thank you to everyone that helped with that. It was awesome.
Yeah. That's the biggest crowd I've ever seen. And I've been to a lot of those, too. And others? All right, then we are adjourned.